Welcome to the County County Board of Commissioners, final public hearing on the 2021 tax millage levy. Today is Tuesday, August 3rd. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After this, our next meeting will start at 6:00 PM and we anticipate adoption of the millage rate at that time. With that, we'll turn it over to Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. This is the third public hearing for the millage rate. The recommended unincorporated millage rate would be 6.65 mils, which is a decrease of the previous 6.686 mils. And the unincorporated, excuse me, incorporated millage rate would be 7.9 mils, a decrease of 7.616. Again, this is the third public hearing on the millage.
Very good. Any questions from commissioners? With that, we'll open up to any public comments on the millage. Anyone virtually? With that, we'll close the public hearing. We'll be back at 6:00 PM to start our regular meetings. Thank you for tuning in. All right, welcome to the County County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 3rd. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Chuck Horton to lead us in the pledge to the flag. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and all.
Our first item of business will be to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda for tonight. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? There's a couple announcements. I've got everybody here. O'Conne County Fire Rescue will offer an emergency medical responder course to begin September 13th. It's an 84-hour course. It'll be on Mondays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. You can go to our website if you're interested in participating. Also, our solid waste of management plan update will have a public hearing that will take place here at the courthouse on, let's see, August 31st at 3:00 PM. You can also view that on the website as well. Next item is approve the minutes. This will be from our July 6, 2021 tax levy public hearing. 7-6 regular meeting, also our levy hearing on the 27th, as well as our minutes from the 27th.
Make a motion to approve those submitted. Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is to consider the 2021 tax millage levy for O'Conne County Government Maintenance and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The recommended millage rate for the unincorporated portion of the county is 6.65 mils, which represents a decrease from the previous 6.686 mils. But because of background growth in the digest, it's a 4.99% increase. For the incorporated portion of O'Conne County, the recommended millage rate is 7.59 mils, a decrease from the 7.616 mils, but a 6.14% increase due to background growth digest as well.
Any questions on that? Any public comment on the tax levy? Very good. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the reduction in the village to from 6.68 to 6.65 in the unincorporated areas.
7.5 mils.
Yes, 7.5 mils.
We're going to have a motion second and discussion.
I do. I've got one thing. This is the fourth time I've got to do this. So, yeah, I want to thank everybody. It may be a record. I hope somebody breaks it, but I think, I think we did three my first term. It's been a while, but it makes me happy. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is consider the confirmation of the 2021 tax millage levy for the O'Conne County School Maintenance and Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The school board and superintendent sent over passing a motion recommending the school MNO levy at 16.5 mils. This requires the Board of Commissioners to approve the millage rate for the school board.
Very good. Any questions on that? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to confirm this 2121 tax levy for O'Conne County Schools Maintenance and Operations.
Second.
We have a motion second and discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is approval of the bond resolution authorizing the issuance of both Conne County, Georgia General Obligation Bond, Series 2021, and for other related purposes.
Well, we've had a great day for O'Conne County today, and I'll introduce our helpers and workers, Andrew Tripp with Steeple, Jim Woodward and Kate Hagan with Grape and Ellen Woodward. Andrew, I'll turn it over to you to tell everybody the good news.
Well, nice to be with everyone. I'll give you just a real high overview financial-wise and then kick it over to Jim Woodward from the legal aspect. Just to go straight to it, I mean, I think there's a lot to say, but we were able to sell, you know, bonds that went out almost 14 years at 93 and a half basis points today. So that's under 1%, which is just fantastic. It was a perfect storm. This was really the only Georgia municipal deal on the market this week. There's a lot of money coming in from bond redemptions. You guys had over $60 million worth of orders for $12.5 million worth of bonds. So, a lot of people really wanted O'Conne County's bonds. A lot of that has to do with the fact that you guys got your bond rating upgrade. You went from AA2 to AA1. I think you guys discussed that at the last meeting. That all just goes to the hard work of, you know, what you guys do, what Wes and Justin do every day, just kind of making sure that the county's financials stay where they are, that you sort of manage your growth and Sean, which you guys are, you're the smallest AA1 or, yeah, AA1 county in the state. I mean, you guys are right up next to, you know, places like the city of Atlanta and just places that just have really large tax bases. So, I mean, everybody in O'Conne County ought to be proud of it. You know, we were able to offer, you know, all this with the help of Wes and Justin and Daniel and Jim and Kate. So, I mean, it's really been a team effort. You know, I like to say that the sales guys over at Steeple did a bang-up job, and they did. But, I mean, really, it's on the backs of everybody I just mentioned. So, thank you for the opportunity. I'd be more than happy to answer any sort of questions before ending it all. Questions? Thank you all for the opportunity.
As lawyer, I know, I'll keep my part short. So, basically, be like what you heard. What we're presenting today is a bond resolution. This is the final and only approval for the bonds. This locks in those rates, the point 0.9, 0.93 percentage, you try to lock it in, in this point forward, and basically allows us to close on the bond transaction on August 10th. So, all we need is a vote to approve the bond resolutions presented.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll just remind you, the bonds have already been validated. Everything's done. So, this is the final action and approval of this process.
Any public comment? Anyone virtually? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the bond resolution as presented.
No motion second and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is consider resolution intergovernmental agreement for the T-SLOSS referendum. We've talked about this in theory for a long time and last several meetings we've been talking about as well. We have met with all the cities that are interested in participating. They've all had meetings and approved the IGA that's before us tonight. We're looking at a $56 million referendum. The City of Bishop will get $380,800 of that. Bogart gets $1,523,200. North High Show is $1,108,800. And the City of Watkinsville will be $4,832,800. And this is all at full collection. That'll leave a net of $48,154,400 for O'Conne County. And we've talked about the different, breaking it down into four categories, which is related services. And this is the allowable expenses coming from the general fund to allow property tax relief. We've been through the numbers two or three times and we found enough allowable expenses that will allow this board to drop the millage rate one mil with the passage of T-SLOSS. That's the pleasure of the board at that time. That would begin in FY '23. Also, we have $3.75 million going to multi-use paths. And we've got several projects on our books on putting in sidewalks and paths. And with the passage of the T-SLOSS, we'd be able to create a task force and kind of prioritize those projects. Safety and intersection improvements is $5 million. This is similar to what we did on Hog Mount Road with the widening of the lanes, intersection improvements to include roundabouts. And then the remaining $26,279,000 will go to road paving. And we're in the process now of getting our roads rated. So, we'll have a good idea of exactly what roads we can hit once that's done. Any questions on?
Chairman, I've got, just for the public's consumption, currently under the budget restraints that we have, what percentage of our roads are being repaved now versus what could be repaved if the T-SLOSS is approved?
Right now, we're paving about half what we should be to be on a true phase replacement of the roads. So, it's about six to seven miles. We should be doing twice that, 15 to 20.
So, that'll speed that up?
Yes.
So, it's what, like, once every 20 years?
That's kind of the rule of thumb. We should be able to hit close to our...
5%?
Yep.
But right now, it's half that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll say this too, because we've been talking about this. I know Mark Thomas, number of conversations. Truthfully, we could probably spend $20 million a year to jump on. And I don't think that's really stretching it, because I think if folks drive around the county and you look at all the places where our crews have patched roads and got the spraying in, trying to cover the cracks, like I said, I think we could keep road crews busy for a good while. But this is a really good improvement, I think, giving us a chance at at least looking at, you know, the end. You know, the other thing that's going to do is it's going to put us in a really good position to have our amount of cash and capital available if and when infrastructure funding becomes available from the federal government too. So, it's gonna, it's gonna, I think, have a multiplier effect where it's all over.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Anyone virtually? Okay. With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the IGA with the cities and also to approve the referendum resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to enter the government agreement for T-SLOSS referendum.
A motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Right now, we'll move into our hearing in actions on zoning matters. Just get a quick review of the process. The reason on petitions shall be presented by the staff with a due time limit. The applicant and those wish signing up to speak for the petition will be allowed a total of 20 minutes, less the applicant's reserve for, reserved time for rebuttal. Those signed up to speak against petitions shall also be allowed 20 minutes. After that, the public comment section will be closed and the board will have an opportunity to ask questions as they find appropriate. And the board shall take action as set out in Unified Development Code. With that, we'll call our first one, which is special use number P210101, Ernest Rivera, barbershop home business. This is .69 acres located at 1021 Greenbrier Court Residential Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, you have P210101, Ernest Rivera, applicant owner. This is located off of Greenbrier Court. It's currently zoned R1 and is in the regional center of character area. And again, the request is for a special use for a barber shop home business. This is the actual plat of the property. I know changes we've made to the property. And staff recommends approval with the one condition. Planning Commission also recommends approval with the same condition.
Yeah, we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Hi, my name is Sissy Rivera, and I'm the owner of Watkinsville Clipper Cuts. I live at 1021 Greenbrier Court. I've owned the barber shop for 19 years, and I've been in this location 10 years. And during COVID, we took a pretty big lick. It hurt our business, but, you know, we bounced back enough to reopen and try and keep our business going. Now that my lease is due to be renewed, I just feel financially it's a better decision for me to try and locate it at my home. What I do have would be state board approval. I've talked to my neighbors, which I've lived there for 22 years. I've talked to other people in the subdivision about it and have, you know, they have no problems with it. I don't have a bus turnaround there. It is well-lit. I would be open three days a week, 9:00 to 5:30. I would do one client at a time, six per day. So, that would leave two vehicles in my driveway, mine and the client's. So, it wouldn't interfere with any emergency vehicles or no noise for my subdivision. So, at this time, I'm asking permission from the board to please allow me to relocate it in my home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie? We may have some questions for you in a minute. You can have a seat.
Okay.
My name's Stephanie Bales, and I live at 1051 Timber Ridge Road. My house is directly across the street that goes into that cul-de-sac. My husband and I have also been in that neighborhood as long as the Riveras. I am, they are great neighbors. She has done a great job of informing all the neighbors. We are all in favor of her having an opportunity to continue her business in this county that she loves. Thank you, guys, for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the special use? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against the special use? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and open up any questions from commissioners. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion. We approve special use P21-0101, Ernest Rivera, Barbershop Home Business, .69 acres located at 1021 Greenbrier Court Residential with one condition.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to approve special use P210101 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. So, our next item will be rezon number P210102, Mary Bishop and Sue Roach. This is AG to AR is 2.024 acres located at 2011 Elder Mill Road.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezon P210102, Kate Richard, Life Estate, located just off of Elder Mill Road. And this is the aerial of the property and the proposed split parcel. Again, it's owned AG and in the agricultural preservation character area. And the rezon is a request to split off a portion of the property from AG to AR to allow for the creation of an additional two-acre residential lot with the existing home. You'll notice this is the proposed tract and the existing homestead is there. Just to zoomed in exhibit. And staff recommends approval with the one condition. Planning Commission also recommends approval with the same condition.
And we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner? You want to say anything? Okay, very good. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for rezon? Anyone virtually? Anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments this time and open up any questions. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve rezon number P21-0102, Mary L Bishop and Sue P Roach, AG to AR, plus or minus 2.024 acres located at 2011 Elder Mill Road with one condition.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion in second to approve P210102 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item will be rezon P21-0108, Jennifer Colley and Lori Wagner. This is AG to OBP, 13.53 acres located at the northwest intersection of Jimmy Daniel Road and Ben Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, rezon P210108, Colley and Wagner owners. This is the aerial shot of the three parcels that are proposed to be rezoned off of Ben Drive and Jimmy Daniel. It's currently zoned AG. In the regional center character area. And again, the request is from AG to OBP for an office business park for general office and office warehouse space. You have in your packets the conceptual. Plan that was proposed with the reason. Larger version. The architectural photos that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the, our three standard conditions and the number four. All building facade materials should be brick, stone, or glass as shown in the first and third representative architecture images submitted in the narrative of the application. No metal siding should be permitted on any building in the development. Number five, at the time of development of each lot, sidewalks should be extended from the proposed public road to connect with sidewalks around each building. And number six, all lots within development shall only have vehicular access to the proposed interior street. A one foot no access easement along Jimmy Daniel Road shall be shown on the preliminary and final plats for the project. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to these same conditions.
And we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, my name is Frank Pittman. I live at fourteen hundred Saxon Road, Watkinsville. I'm here representing Kevin Price, Kevin Price Construction, who is the, not, not the current owner, but is going to be purchasing and developing this project if it goes forward. As Mr. Herring mentioned, I am, we are requesting a rezone of thirteen and a half acres from AG to OBP on Jimmy Daniel Road. The property meets the future land use plan. Sitting in the regional center character area. The plan is for up to nine buildings, each of which would be one story office or office warehouse buildings. You know, the, the buildings would be similar to what Mr. Price is in at the building he's in now on Jimmy Daniel Road, which, which he built a few years ago. The, the project would be on county water, but on septic, there's no sewer, sewer there at this site. The buildings range from eight to ten thousand square feet each. And, and the product, the project would be phased. All buildings not be built at one time, but as needs, needs arise. There, there are plans for a full interchange at Jimmy Daniel on three sixteen, as you guys know. So this will put it close to, to an exit on the three sixteen, quick availability to head towards Atlanta. As Mr. Harry mentioned, staff and planning commission have recommended approval and we're here tonight to ask you guys for approval with the conditions as recommended.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezone? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments section and open up to any questions. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to, excuse me, to approve a rezone P twenty one dash zero, one, dash zero, eight. As stated with the six conditions.
Here we have a motion in second to approve reason request P twenty one dash zero, one, zero, eight with six conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is special use number P twenty one dash zero, one, zero, nine, this is SRC Development LLC. Aminity area is three point zero nine acres located at twelve twenty five Stone Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, special use P twenty one, zero, one, zero, nine. Located in the Stone, Stonewood subdivision just off of Union Church. And it's currently zoned R one. It's in suburban neighborhood. Again, the applicant is requesting special use approval for the amenity area within the Stonewood subdivision. You have the concept plan in your application, in your packets that was proposed with the application. You'll notice the pickleball court. That will bring great joy to many folks here in the county. These are the concept plans proposed with the, and the architectural renderings. And staff recommends approval with the one condition, planning commission also recommends.
All right, we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, I'm Logan Waters, fourteen twenty six Wyndham Way, Bethlehem. And I'm here on behalf of the developer SRC Development. As a condition of the rezone of the original property, we were required to get a special use permit for the amenity area. So as you saw on the concept plan, we are currently proposing swimming pool and cabana, pickleball court, and a tennis court. We are not encroaching on to the conservation corridor, there is a string that's splattered on the back of the property. And we are actually providing for parking for any residents, although the hope is it'll be walkable neighborhood. And I'm happy to answer any questions, y'all got them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezone? Or special use, excuse me. Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and open up to any questions. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve special use P twenty one, zero, one, zero, nine SRC Development LLC. Amenity area located at twelve twenty five Stone Road, currently undeveloped with, with one condition.
Very good, we have a motion in second to approve special use P twenty one, zero, one, zero, nine with one condition, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is rezone P twenty one dash zero, one, one, zero, this is Michael Thornton, it's AR to B two. It's point five nine acres located at ten sixty Hog Mountain Road. We also have a variance of P twenty one, zero, one, one, one. And this is the way the requirement for fifty foot incompatible, incompatible land use buffer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, reason P twenty one, zero, one, one, zero, and variance P twenty one, zero, one, one, one. Mike Thornton is the owner. This is located at Hog Mountain and just west of four forty one and in between there, Wellbrook. It's currently zoned AR and in the civic center character area. And again, the owner is requesting to go from AR to B two for a drive through restaurant. And they're also requesting the reduction in the fifty foot incompatible land use buffer to fifteen feet along the rear property line and twelve feet on both sides. You'll notice in the concept plan shows the twelve foot. Proposed buffer, fifteen foot proposed landscape buffer. And the location of the, the restaurant and the drive through and the entrance. Alaska plan. Rendering that was submitted with the application. And the proposed architectural images that were submitted as well. Staff recommends conditional approval with the three standard conditions. And number four, I'll bring that to your attention at the owner's expense, owner shall design and construct improvements at the project entrance. Old Hog Mountain Road and Hog Mountain Road as shown on the attached transportation recommendation sheet. And said improvements shall be shown on preliminary site plan and site development plans for the project. Planning Commission recommended denial of the, of the rezone. Staff recommends also one additional condition and that would be number five. After review with our transportation, planning, third party engineer. Interpartial access shall be provided to both adjacent parcels from the parking area in front of the proposed building. Said access easement shall be shown on the preliminary site plan and site development plans for the project. And this is that exhibit that, that our condition number four referenced, which is the improvements at that intersection of Old Hog Mountain and Hog Mountain Road. This, we believe in our transportation consultant has recommended these improvements to make this a safer location. For this access and for movements at this location. And then the interpartial access that we're requiring would be in this general area and this general area such that when this property develops and this develops, there will be interpartial access between those, those properties. And again, for the variance P twenty one, zero, one, 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 staff recommend, does believe this meets all the necessary conditions. And there are those two conditions that would be a sign, a sign to that variance if, if so approved.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Chair and Board, I appreciate y'all taking the time to look at this. My name is Mark Campbell and I live at twenty five fifty one Oliver Bridge Road. I'm here on behalf of Mike Thornton tonight, Mike is a little bit under the weather, so he's not able to be here in person. But hopefully you know Mike Thornton, if you do not, he's been in Oconee County a long time. He's lived here and he's worked here and I appreciate you taking the time to consider this project. Most specifically, I do appreciate the planning staff taking the time to, to really look at this project, the details of this project. And of course, we do appreciate their recommendation for approval of this project with just a few conditions. I could stand up here for a great long time and, and talk about the positive impacts that Mike Thornton has had in this community. Things that he's done to be a good neighbor. I'm not going to belabor that point with you, but I'll be respectful of your time this evening. Just to talk about a few things very briefly at this location. As staff indicated, this is in a civic center character area. It's about two hundred and fifty feet west of Highway four forty one. Some people still call that Macon Highway. And so it, on that northern side of Hog Mountain Road, you can see some of the adjacent development from the county's brand new twenty twenty one aerial pictures, which has certainly been, been helpful to, to me as an engineer. This is a closer view of that area. The, the property is undeveloped, Mike has owned it since nineteen eighty-eight. He worked for thirty-nine years at Experiment Station, which is about a mile from this location. And currently, he lives about a quarter of a mile from this location. Some of you may or may not have been aware of that. So that is where Mike and on his personal residence is, just about a quarter of a mile north of this location. At the end of the day, Mike Thornton wants to be a good neighbor. And have a positive impact on this community and on his neighbors. It's a small piece of property, point five nine acres. There's not many places in Oconee County that actually have a lot that is this small. The proposed restaurant is fifteen hundred square feet, which is probably much smaller than the average house size in Oconee County. It's a small parcel with a small building with just a few parking spaces. But hopefully it can have that positive impact on, on people and on families that are already traveling up and down. Making highway corridor that may be traveling like I do to work every day, coming and turning down Hog Mountain Road to, to head towards Marsh Hill Road. I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this rezone or about the buffer variance. We have spoken to both adjacent property owners, the Harden family owns a property that's both to the east and to the north. Steve Harden, he is supportive of this project one hundred percent. And I've also spoken to Alex Patterson on behalf of Presbyterian Homes, who owns the property that is to the west of that. You may have seen that on the aerial image as well. He supports this project. I know there's an additional condition regarding interpartial access. Spoken to planning department about that specifically, spoken to Mike Thornton, the owner about that. He is amiable to that as well. He wants to be a good neighbor and he wants this project to have a positive impact. So again, I'll, I'll yield my time, I'll be respectful of yours, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for rezone P twenty one, zero, one, one, zero, or the variance? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against the rezone or the variance? Anyone virtually? Well, we'll go ahead and close the public comments at this time and open up any questions from commissioners. And we'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the rezone.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve rezone P twenty one dash zero, one, one, zero. For Michael Thornton from AR to B two with the five conditions outlined.
We have a motion in second for rezone number P twenty one dash zero, one, one, zero with five conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Now we're entertaining a motion for the variance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion to approve variance P twenty one dash zero, one, 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 Michael Thornton, to waive the requirement of fifty foot incompatible land use buffer with the two conditions outlined.
We have a motion in second for, to approve variance P twenty one dash zero, one, one, one with two conditions, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item is rezone number P twenty one dash zero, one, one, two, this is Jeff Bale, this is AG to AR. It's thirteen point one nine acres located at the intersection of Column Ferry Road and Green Ferry Road. We also have a variance number P twenty one dash zero, one, one, three associated with that same piece of property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, reason P twenty one, zero, one, one, two, and variance P twenty one, zero, one, one, three. Jeff Bell owner just located just south of Watkinsville. Along Column Ferry Road, this is the aerial photographs and representative parcels. That is currently zoned AG in the country states character area. And again, the property owner requests a rezone, the thirteen acre portion of the property from AG to AR to allow for the development of a residential subdivision. And the, and again, the property owner is requesting a hardship variance from UDC section one, zero, zero, three, dot, oh, nine, A, three, to allow lots within a major subdivision to have access from an existing street outside of the development. You have the proposed concept plan in your packets. This is an exhibit of the five lots proposed. The architectural images that were proposed with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with the standard three conditions. And number four, unless the hardship variance is approved by the board commissioners, which is before you tonight. All lots shall be accessed only from an interior subdivision street and a one foot no access easement along Column Ferry Road. So we shown preliminary plat, final plat for the project. Planning Commission recommends approval subject to the conditions recommended by staff. And for variance P twenty one, zero, one, one, three, staff recommends that the request does not meet all necessary conditions. However, should the present request be approved, we did suggest the, the one condition.
And we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Frank Pittman, fourteen hundred Saxon Road, here representing Jeff and Tanya Bell, the property owners. You know, I, I said this at the planning commission, I'll tell you guys, and a lot of you know Jeff and Tanya, but they've got, they've got two new grandbabies that are living in the Savannah area. And so Ms. Tanya has demanded to Jeff that he slow down and, and, and spend more time with grandbabies. So to do that, he's got, he's got to back away from.
Good luck with getting him to slow down.
From some of this, some of this work and that includes, you know, some of his farming. And so, you know, this, this property has been in his family for, for three generations. The, the lake here has been here for, we just, we were just talking about the other day for, for over sixty years now. The, the request, the reason request is for the portion of, of the property that, that fronts the lake along Column Ferry. Thirteen acres total. From, the request would be from AG to AR to allow four or five. Lots ranging from two to three acres. The, the, the property is in the country states character area, which, which calls for one to two acre lots. So it's, it's well in keeping with character area. There, there are many other AR lots in the area. There's even a full, a whole AR subdivision on Green Ferry Road, just, just to the east of this property. The, the property, the lots will be on county water, but on septic. And we, we would ask for your approval for the rezone. Staff has recommended approval, planning commission has also recommended approval for that. With, with the conditions as, as noted, they, they do have, there are people already calling excited about the, the property and, and wanting to know when they can start building a house out there. So hopefully you guys are favorable to it. As far as hardship variance goes. I'm asking for a variance, the, the UDC requires any major subdivision to, for all lots to access interior roads and not, not. I'm asking for a variance. The UDC requires any major subdivision to for all lots to access interior roads and not not existing roads. Minor subdivisions are not the case, and they could they could have they could come off the existing road. What makes this a major subdivision is that the the property was subdivided years ago once already. So it could only be basically, you could only create three, three more parcels administratively. So we're asking for five, which makes it a major subdivision. There are, it's it's in keeping with, the request is in keeping with with everything that goes on down Collin Ferry. Again, I drive down Collin Ferry ten times a day, every day going to my house. Houses have driveways all along Collin Ferry. There there aren't any issues down through there. The request, we we feel like the hardship variance is is valid for following reasons. If if you will look at the the requests, they're actually two two separated parcels of land, so they're not contiguous. So there there would not be the ability to 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 run a road from one side to the other because they don't they don't touch each other. You can also could not have a private drive do that, and you can't, the UDC doesn't allow two private drives. You don't have one private drive, so couldn't make those work. But the 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 truest hardship really is the depth of the property. There's some, there's some tight points. If you look at on the screen here, just to the left of lot three, behind the existing house. There's only about eighty feet right there between the back of the existing property line and the floodplain. Same goes for between four, lot four and lot five, between the front building setback and the floodplain is only eighty feet. A private drive requires forty foot easement. A a local street requires fifty foot right away. They're they're just physically in enough room between the the front of the property and floodplain to fit to fill a road in and to be able to build houses on this. Obviously, the the lake is existing. It's been there for sixty years. It's not a, it's not a creation of my client, even though it's been in family property for three generations. My client didn't physically build this this lake here. So the the limited space is is the is the big factor here. The we feel like it would not be detrimental to the public as as again administratively, he he could do three driveways on this already. So the request is really for for two additional driveways over what would be allowed administratively. The as I mentioned, there are driveways and lot sizes, as you can see the existing lot there, that are significantly smaller than what we're requesting here. The these variances, there have been variances in the past that have been given for the same code section. The last one that comes to mind is that that the that Stonebridge subdivision, which was a similar type deal that you guys granted a variance for for new lots to front on the existing street so that it wouldn't have double street frontage. That's that's the request. I'll leave out some time to answer any questions, but we would ask for you guys approval on the rezone and variance here or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezone or the variance? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against the rezone or the variance? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section, open up to any questions from Commissioners. And we'll entertain a motion for the rezone.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve rezone P twenty one dash zero one one two, Jeffrey B Bell. AG to AR Residential District thirteen point one nine acres located at the intersection of Collin Ferry Road and Green Ferry Road, undeveloped with four condition. Second.
Here we have a motion and second to approve rezone P twenty one dash zero one one two with four conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And now we're entertaining a motion for the variance.
I'll make a motion to approve variance P twenty one dash zero one one three, Jeffrey B Bell, to allow lots of them, a major subdivision, to have access from an existing street. Thirteen point one nine acres located at the intersection of Collin Ferry Road and Green Ferry Road, undeveloped, one condition. Second.
We have a motion and second to approve variance P twenty one dash zero one one three with one condition. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now move to our consent item. Does any commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the consent agenda is
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We do have need of an executive session to discuss land acquisition and litigation.
Like a motion that we return to executive session for land acquisition and litigation. Second.
Yeah, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
They already got sounds up.
All right, we need a motion to go back in regular session.
So moved.
We have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boris, you know, we're, we have an agreement with Smart City Capital for the broadband project. It's been something negotiated over a long amount of time. The economics, economics of the project have changed significantly over this time period. There's been some issues between subs, which we would do not directly contract with in the primary Smart City Capital. At this point, we haven't begun expending any funds on the project. Those are all contemplated out of the SPOSS twenty one. There's no assets on the ground, but at this point, there's no assets. And so my recommendation at this point is we vote to terminate the contract or the agreement with Smart City Capital and pivot the project.
I'll make a motion to second.
We have a motion and second to terminate the agreement with Smart City Capital. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. With that, Commissioners.
Motion adjourned.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you.